What is up everybody and welcome back to another episode of the Small Lake City Podcast. I'm your host, Eric Nilson, and for this episode, we are going to jump back into local politics. And for this one, it's the governing body that manages the Salt Lake County budget and Salt Lake County itself, which represents about 1.2 million people and is a $2 billion budget. So it's a pretty big deal around Salt Lake of who is holding the purse strings of that and how they are going to spend it. Cause this is everything from the health department to prisons, to our parks, to our golf courses and everything in between that really needs to run smoothly and we all want to run smoothly so we can continue in our lives unhitched and unhinged so that we can have all of the things we need. So this person that we have on is running for the city county council position at large. And we'll get into the details of what that actually means. But this person hails from the great state of Texas and has spent a lot of time in Utah, going to school at BYU, working at Goldman Sachs, coming back from Dallas to work in private wealth management, and then also start her own venture capital fund as well, which has led her to want to run for this position, tapped to be this position. Politics was always something that she wanted to do, but at the end of the day, accepted that call and is running for that county council position at large. So if you don't know by now, her name is Rochelle Morris, a really great person. One of my really good friends that I used to work with is managing her campaign named Chase Christensen. And it was great to talk to her and get to know her perspective on it all and why this matters to all of us. So I know it's not the most sexy of things sometimes to talk about county council, but it's one of the things that impacts us the most directly. So check out me and Rochelle's conversation. I think it goes really well. A lot we can all learn about it. So enjoy.
No, Rochelle, I'm excited because there's so many, just like the context, there's so many important races and so many things going on politically. And I think there's some that get overshadowed by others. I mean, Carolyn Click and like the whole senate race and everything going on there. I know that gets a lot of the spotlight. But there's other more local elections that are, I mean, just as are more important. And so I love that as I got introduced to you and I've understood a little bit more about it, I've started to see more. I can't remember the theory for that, but like when you know of something, you see it more. And so as soon as I saw it, I kept seeing all these articles where it's like the county council seat at large. And I just keep seeing it. It's like nothing else is described as such. And so I know that obviously that has been the thing eating and taking up all of your time of getting to know everybody in good old Salt Lake County and the people that you want to represent one day. But yeah, I'm excited to talk with you more about kind of how we got here.
Well, and I was just joking with someone on texting the other night that I am the nerd who everyone is going to be focused on Trump versus Biden on November 5th. And I'm going to be closely monitoring the county council at large race. And did I just get elected or not? Probably, you know, one of a handful of people who will be truly focused on that down ballot race. But it's probably one of the few races that impacts Salt Lake County residents more than any other race going on in 2024. But it's hilarious. You bring up Carolyn. Carolyn is 38. I'm 39. We're both blondes. We're in different parties, running for different offices, but both running for pretty significant offices for being first time candidates. And you bring up Carolyn and I'm a Republican running for office. And so, oh gosh, all the names that I've been hearing over the past few months are the Republican attorney general candidates, the Republican senate candidates, the Republicans who are challenging Governor Cox in the gubernatorial race. You know, it's hilarious and good to go through this whole party nominating process. And then, you know, in the primaries coming up June 25th, so we're, you know, less than two months away now from the primary. And then there'll kind of be a little bit of a summer lull and then fall is like prime time for general election.
And it's crazy. It's like right in the middle of that. And I mean, it's all of these different elections, right? But I mean, especially with you, I mean, you've had your announcement, you've had time to kind of get ready for that nomination. And then once it happened, it's like, okay, like it's time to actually like start moving. And then your targets start to change a little bit. Like to your point, you start talking about different people in different places instead of kind of well within your own party and all of those different lives. But I totally love what you're saying about how you and Carolyn have so many similarities. I mean, differences, obviously, but also a lot of similar qualities that I think are exciting times to have those. I think people want fresh voices, fresh people, younger people for sure. And so I think it's nice to have a lot of these things overlap in ways that whether your political party or what you believe, that there's an option for you to have a fresh perspective and a fresh point of view.
Well, and this is the first real major election cycle since COVID, right? And I think that this year is a year in which millennials in both parties are saying, okay, it's time for us to have representation in elected office in these senior positions that represent, you know, upwards of millions of people in the state. So this county council, Salt Lake County Council.
Yeah. Tell us about the significance and then we can go back and get all the history.
Yes. And it's fascinating because, so I just went through the party nominating, the convention nominating process. I won the GOP convention in Salt Lake County.
Congratulations.
Thank you. 58-42, which on the Republican side, you need to get 60% to be the outright party nominee at convention. So we still are headed to a primary, but I'm feeling all the momentum going into the primary and really excited about where my candidacy is today. But in that process, I got to know about 1,500 Salt Lake County delegates. Republican delegates who vetted me. And, uh, and so in these candidate meet and greets with delegates, one of my first ones, maybe the third one into the whole process, because I held 32 different delegate meet and greets. Uh, I wanted to be accessible to every single delegate across the county. And, uh, and that was like over a 30 day span. We did, we, we did more than one a day on average. It was crazy, but it was awesome too. And so in the third one in, I go, do y'all know how the county council is structured with the mayor? And it was kind of deer caught in the headlights and we happened to be in a county library with a whiteboard with markers. And I go, would it be helpful if I just like whiteboard charted this out like an org chart? And everyone nodded their heads. And so, you know, delegates are some of the most informed voters in our county. And I would say that most delegates wouldn't have been able to chart out how is the council structured? How does it relate to the county mayor and the county mayor's office? So, so anyways, Salt Lake County Council, uh, the mayor council form of government was created in the year 2000. So prior to that, there were three Salt Lake County commissioners, similar to most counties in the state. So the person who's been holding the seat for the last 24 years, Jim Bradley, he was a county commissioner before that. So he's been representing Salt Lake County in public office for upwards of 40 years now. Wow. Yeah. It's been over 30 years. And I actually just met him at a Cottonwood Heights city town hall last week. And just true gentleman, lives in Salt Lake City. You know, he talked about the importance of stewardship in this role. But anyways, I digress. So the council is nine people. Six of those seats are district seats. So I like to think of those as like the miniature house of representatives for Salt Lake County. So each district represents about 200,000 people and those are four year terms. And so, you know, District one is Arlen, District two is Dave, District three, Amy, District four is Ann, District five is Sheldon, District six is Dee. And so districts two, four, and six are up for reelection this year. So three of the six district seats are always up for reelection every two years, right?
Got it.
And then the at-large seats represent the entire county and those are six year terms. So I view the at-large seats as like the miniature senate.
Hmm. Okay. That's what you're doing here.
Yes. And so they're big races. This is one and a half times the size of a congressional race that I am running as a first time candidate in a down ballot race. But, you know, it's, it's a $2 billion ish annual budget that the council ultimately manages the purse strings of. And I felt like this was really vital to get a millennial, to get a professional investor on the council. And to, when I looked at the at-large seat versus potentially running for a district seat, you know, this is about stewardship of the entire county, um, going, being able to spend time in every one of the six districts of the county, but then going up to the 50,000 foot level and saying, and so how am I going to, uh, to represent the entire county with how I'm voting, with how I'm working on the council? And, and the word that just keeps coming back is, is stewardship. These are, these are taxpayer funds all coming across the county and what are we doing with that money?
Yeah. I mean, it's such, such an important thing because I mean, as, I mean, like I am no longer, let's put it this way, I'm no longer the lowest selection on like personal information sheets. Like I have to scroll, like to go back to my birth year, I have to scroll a little bit more now. And, and I mean, it makes us think a lot more about the future and as we can understand more and have more perspective in our lives of what's happened 24681012, 20 years ago and see how it impacts us today. I mean, one good example of what we've been impacted by in the past has come up. I mean, for me personally, in the podcast, in the past two weeks, like 20 times is the Olympics. And as we've looked back, I mean, 22 years ago in the Olympics, we're here, how much that has impacted us? I mean, it gave us public transportation with tracks and improved our freeways. We got all this great recreational space. We got, I mean.
Right. Racquetball stadium.
We got, we got a lot of things. And so it's fun to be able to in a situation now where I can be look back and say, how much this has impacted us and things that went well, things that didn't and say, okay, we have this chance to do it again. And similarly, we can look at other policies, practices and impact and make that to make more informed decisions. And we need people who do have skin in the game. Like you said, I mean, younger millennial people who really do view the future with a lot more regard than people who may not have that much runway. And so I think there's, there's a lot of people that are paying a lot more attention. Like you said, it is the first election after COVID. I think people are, have a lot more opinions than they did then. And I, and I think it's nice to have people who truly value what we want to accomplish and reach those goals.
Hey, it's me, the host of the Small Lake City Podcast, Eric Nilson. Hope you're enjoying today's episode. And if you are, make sure to like and leave a review as well as subscribe to the podcast so you can hear more of the great guests that I have coming your way. Also make sure to follow us on Instagram and TikTok under the handle SmallLakePod. SmallLakePod on Instagram and TikTok. Also, if you prefer video, then make sure to head over to the YouTube channel and subscribe there as well. Enjoy the rest of the episode.
Yeah, no, absolutely. And as I was chatting with Jim last week, you know, I kind of joked, Jim, why, why aren't you running for one more term? And he, he goes, well, I'm 77 years old. You know, let's, let's just, let's not die in office. He's like, I'm feeling, I'm feeling good. And, and, uh, but we had just a nice little conversation about how, you know, when he first got elected to represent the entire county. I mean, golly, has Salt Lake County changed since the late eighties? I mean, goodness. And so he kind of talked about just, you know, really think about the long-term impacts of near-term decisions that you're making, especially when it comes to infrastructure investment, parks and trails and, you know, where physical buildings are going to be to service the community, libraries, recreational facilities. And I, and I told him, I said, yeah, I, it really dawned on me just how long you've been serving in office when I went to the Sandy Library early in my campaign and I, you know, I've been in the Sandy Library before, but you step in and you then all of a sudden notice the plaque off to the side. Like, hey, I'm going to actually go and take a look at this thing. It was dedicated in 1991 and the first name on the plaque is Jim Bradley, 1991. There will be lots of people voting in this race who were born after 1991.
Yes.
And so as I told him, I said, look, I, I, I'm working really hard to understand what's going on in the county today. Obviously I've worked for almost two decades in financial services as a professional investor and we can dig into that too. But, um, and, and I said, what I, what I want to do is I want to serve in a way where people go, you know what? That was a nice passing of the baton.
Yes.
From one generation to, you know, we'll skip, we'll skip a generation or two, to a millennial. And I don't know if I'll serve for one term if I, if I end up winning this election or two terms, right? But, uh, it would be great to have that opportunity to serve for the next six years because over the next six years, that's when so many of the decisions about the Olympics are going to happen. And, you know, we have growth still happening on the southwest quadrant and on the west side of I-15. And thinking through what are the infrastructure needs there? How are we going to plan for neighborhoods and communities where they're set up for success for decades? And not just, oh, we need to build some housing. Let's slap some housing together. And then no one wants to live in that housing 10 years from now. Like that would be a problem in our county. And, uh, and I'm not interested in just quick fixes. I want to think through, no, I'm in the seat for six years. So let's make really concerted decisions and be decisive about it, but also think about long-term impact to these near-term decisions.
Totally. We gotta be able to, yeah, not just think so myopically, but really think what's, what's down the road for all of us. Cause you know, I can be honest in saying, we don't need more stucco boxes. We don't need, um, like whenever people start talking about building and planning and how terrible it is, I just think of driving through Lehigh where you'll be like, oh, here's a corn maze. Here's a new housing development. Here's a farm. Here's a, like a WeWork. And it's just so, anyway, I could talk about it all because I drive through it so much. I'm like, if you ever need a fast casual restaurant or a lot of questions about why things are built where that's Lehigh is that place? Especially having grown up here and it used to just be Thanksgiving Point and Point of the Mountain. But before we go further, like, sure, now we understand what this race means, this seat at large, seat being vacant.
1.2 million people.
1.2 million people, $2 billion budget.
Yeah.
That's, I mean, that's, that's a lot of responsibility. And I love that you always cite kind of like that you've been prepared for this. You have the experience and the resume to do so, but let's, let's unpack that a little bit. I know that you do hail from the great state of Texas and made your way here for school. And I'm sure that's where a lot of your decisions came to be. But I mean, what kind of helped pay the way to get to Utah and at least have that be a place on the map that you wanted to end up?
Yeah. Well, so I'm a descendant of Utah pioneers on both sides of my family. And so, you know, some of my, uh, one of my great, 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 great grandfathers, he helped settle Cottonwood Heights. Right? I mean, and, uh, it's kind of been fun running for office and really picking up the phone and asking aunts and uncles and my parents and my older brother who really likes family history. Like, okay, tell me the story again of this ancestor and settling Salt Lake County. And, uh, and so, um, my parents met, married in Utah, moved to Texas, thought they'd be there for a few years and ended up raising seven Texans. So I'm the second of seven children, the oldest daughter in the family, oldest sister. And, uh, and my parents, extremely hard workers. I've met so many people on the campaign trail who remind me of my parents, where they're just good, earnest, hardworking folks who raised a family and are empty nesters now and maybe living still on a tight budget and, um, money was tight for us growing up. And, um, and so my brothers and I were on the reduced lunch program in elementary school. And, uh, my mom taught piano in the, in the mornings before school. And when we, when I was getting into the sixth grade, my mom who, um, whose family had been on government assistance programs throughout her upbringing. Her, her father was a welder. And so if he had work, great. If he didn't, then oftentimes they needed some, some assistance. And she was looking at a couple of her siblings who were still, uh, dependent on welfare as adults. And this was the only kind of government assistance program that my family was on. But my mom was, was nervous that she was unintentionally teaching her children that, oh, the government is just going to solve this problem for us. And, and it's not incumbent upon you or any of us to try to creatively solve this problem in our lives. And so she made what I now consider one of the bravest decisions of, uh, my childhood and pulled us off the program when I was going into the sixth grade. And, um, and so running for office, you do so much like personal reflection of how did I get here? And, and, uh, and so I'll never forget the family council where she informed my brothers and me. We're no longer on this program. And so you have a couple of options. You can make a PB and J. Uh, I've, you know, we all knew how to do that. Or you figure out a way to make money and pay for lunch going forward. And we thought that this was, uh, up for debate. It turns out it was not. It was a unilateral decision that she had made. And so after a couple of months of being frustrated about either making a PB and J or asking classmates for money or, you know, just like trying to solve for lunch, I ended up selling gum out of my backpack at school and it turned into other snacks as well. And the first day that I sold, I made $7.50 and I bought everything I wanted in the lunch line. Like didn't hold back. I got the chocolate chip cookie, the chocolate milk, you know, along with the chicken nuggets. And I fell in love with this concept of making money.
Just gonna say, what a, what a great introduction to capitalism.
Well, well, and so, you know, you just, the, the scrappiness, it kind of just, it happened. And, and then making money turned into a problem to be solved.
Yeah.
Yeah. And creativity and just having a willingness and courage to just try new things. And, you know, I, I studied business and obviously I work with lots of startups. And it's funny to think about, you know, iterating on product ideas in the early stages. And it's like, oh yeah, I've been doing this since I was in the sixth grade. And so I'm okay with the idea of like failing fast and, and pivoting and doing something else. But by the time I was 18, I was financially independent and, uh, and I had also earned a full ride scholarship to BYU. And so that's what got me to Utah. I became the first woman on my mom's side of the family to get a college degree. I majored in information systems primarily because, uh, that program had a hundred percent hiring rate and the highest starting salary. And so, you know, this was me of just like, well, if I'm going to work.
Might as well make money and have a job.
Yes. And, and it was, it was great. You know, um, I took computer science sophomore year. It really humbled me. It like, whoa, did it humble me? But also the euphoria of programming, the screensaver in Java for the first time. That's like the bouncing box that goes around and hits the corners. Making that code work for the first time and seeing the box move. I, I got hooked. I got hooked to this idea of, oh, like you can create something inside a software that will do something. And once it's working.
Holding like creative mental playground that is now very real.
And people get paid to do this kind of stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah. So there we go. That was, that was my education. Goldman Sachs recruited me first for an internship and then, uh, full-time. So I was with Goldman for 12 years. And that of course, you know, I look back and I know I'm lucky, uh, that I got that opportunity with Goldman Sachs. I, I interviewed lots of candidates while I was at Goldman over the years. And the joke, you know, with all the employees at Goldman was, oh gosh, if I was part of this interviewing round, I don't know if I would have gotten a job. And so it's really tough to get, to get employment at Goldman, but Goldman is just this, um, it's a, it's a bank that demands excellency and hard work. And if you aren't cutting it, Goldman's not afraid as a large corporation to say, you're great. Performance, not so great, you know, and we're going to go a separate, you know, different way.
But it's like to that point, most, if not all the people I know that worked at Goldman, that kind of set a nice pace for a lot of their life. Like I would say maybe somewhere between like 15 and 25% of my friends that started at Goldman after school are still there. But the people who didn't are still high performers, excellent people. I mean, really like ambitious, go getting people. And it's so fun to see while the end all be all isn't like, oh, I want to be in financial services of some way, shape or form for the rest of my life. It at least gives them, I mean, those technical skills, but also those soft skills and being around those people and also the clients, you're, it's, it's hard not to bump shoulders with people who would, who would give you a great kind of welcome into the corporate world, so to speak. And so I know that that, I mean, set the same stage for you. And I also, because doesn't Goldman like encourage you to be politically active?
Oh, yes. Yes. Yeah. No, Goldman, I mean, there's kind of a joke of a nickname and government sacks. And, um, and if you looked at several presidential cabinets, lots of Goldman alumni have worked their way through presidential cabinets over the years. And, uh, and so what I appreciate about my time at Goldman, because some folks have brought this up on the campaign trail. Well, don't they, you know, pressure you to be one way politically? And it's always funny because it's the opposite of whatever that person's political alliance is, right? So if it's a Democrat asking me that, then they're like, well, don't they make you like pledge allegiance to Trump? And, you know, because he had multiple Goldman people in his cabinet. And if it's, if it's a conservative Republican, it's, oh, isn't Goldman woke? And, you know, and I, and I just say, no, the great thing about Goldman is they just wanted us to be engaged civically in the community. And they, I never felt pressured. And maybe because I worked in Texas and maybe if I worked in, in office in the blue and I happen to be a Republican. So maybe I had my blinders up of like, yeah, I never felt pressured to be anything but, you know, a Republican woman, uh, inside of Goldman. And maybe if I had been in San Francisco, I would have noticed, uh, a different, a different tune or culture inside the office. But, um, investing civically in the community, you know, and being a community builder. Like I, I just think that's what, um, banks should be. And you see it with Zions Bank and Scott Anderson just retired from being CEO of Zions Bank. And he's just invested so much in our local community and that's the largest bank that's headquartered in, in Salt Lake. And just this notion of like, nothing can happen in society without the movement and transfer and storage and custody of money.
Yeah.
Um, and so banks should be in the heart of the community, um, both in the private sector and the nonprofit sector and in the public sector. But, um, you know, so 12 years at Goldman, JP Morgan gave me an incredible opportunity. I was living in Houston at the time to move back to Utah and launch an office here five and a half years ago. So I did that for a few years and, uh, and I got to know so many Silicon Slopes entrepreneurs in the process of building an office out here. And when I was in Texas, so much, so much of the wealth and families and balance sheets I was working on was energy wealth. You know, oil and gas and, and, uh, and so then moving here, it turned into a lot of tech wealth.
Like this is different.
It was different, but it was.
Lot fewer boots and hats.
Yeah. And, and you know, Governor Cox is trying to make Utah the startup state. You know, that's, that's a nickname that he's been promoting. And he appointed, you know, Brad Bonham, who's the Republican National Committee man for the state of Utah, a successful entrepreneur as kind of the entrepreneur in residence for the state of Utah. And, and this is just, there's something about Utah that is so startup friendly. And in that, and I, I was working for the largest bank in the country, helping these innovative startups and had an opportunity to launch a venture fund two years ago. And I took the plunge and decided to leave the world of the big banks and, and go join the roller coaster ride of venture with startups. So that's what I've been doing the last couple of years.
Yeah. I mean, how was that transition in general going from, I mean, a lot of structured finance, a lot of Goldman Sachs, JP Morgan?
Your compliance officer is always like right down the hall.
Yes. There's this whole kind of like, let's call it old finance, old banking, and then kind of step into this newer form of, I mean, finance of venture capital. I mean, how did, how did one prepare you for the other? And but how was it very different than what you experienced in the past?
Yeah. Well, first of all, it was, uh, it was scary to take the plunge. And I'll never forget had a conversation with a woman named Sid Tetro, who is co-founder and still runs Women Tech Council here in Utah and has just done so much to build up women in STEM and tech careers in our state. And I consulted her about this decision of launching the venture fund. And, you know, of course there's a fear of failure, especially when I've been successful.
Yeah.
Right? And so.
Like it's not broken. I don't like, it's not like you're in this, I have, what do I do? Do I do this? I don't know where to go. Like it's a very different situation where you get presented this opportunity.
Yes. And, and so there was definitely fear of failure going on inside of me. And she goes, just take the leap, jump in the deep end. What's the worst thing that can happen, Rochelle? You don't successfully raise this fund. You only end up doing one fund. And, you know, like those are like the worst case scenarios that could have happened. We don't get the first fund raised at Rev Road Capital. Or we only end up raising one fund because we don't make prudent decisions with our investors' capital and we have to close up shop, right? She goes, what's the worst thing that happens to you? And I'm like, I go back to, you know, being a private wealth advisor at a large bank. And she goes, exactly. Yes.
Doesn't sound so bad.
She's like, and given all this experience that you'll have had of building a venture fund, you'll be that much more empathetic to clients, you know, who are people who've. you'll be that much more empathetic to clients, you know, who are people who've built companies from scratch, right? And, and she's like, you will be that much more successful of a banker after going through this experience. You can't fall down. You can only fall up going for this.
Yeah.
And, uh, and so that was the conversation that gave me the confidence to say, everyone thinks that this is a crazy idea minus Sid Tetro and a few, few other people in my life. Everyone else is saying, you don't really need to do this. And I took the plunge and I'm so grateful that I did. I have fantastic partners. We raised a $61 million fund when venture capital fundraising was down 74% from the previous year. So, uh, and we broke a Utah state record for largest debut venture fund in state history. We've invested in six companies so far. Five of them are located in the great Beehive State. And, uh, and a few of them are Salt Lake County. So, um, you know, and then sometimes people say, well, what does that mean for the county council? And it's like, no, these, this is, this is different things. I'm wearing different hats.
Yep.
You know, a tech startup that I'm investing in is not trying to become a vendor of Salt Lake County.
Yeah. They're not looking, they're not gunning for the, the county golf course.
Yes. Yes. They're not trying to be the, the booking software for the county, the county golf courses or county rec centers. Yeah.
Yeah. And I mean, that's, it's so fun to see like, because I think that's, that's one thing that speaks Utah a ton. I mean, and especially in the, in the tech and venture scene. I mean, you have people who are like, you know what? I'm going to take this risk and I'm going to do it because I want something better for myself, something for my family. I have this voice in my head that I have to listen to, or else it's going to bug at me the rest of my life. And I think Utah historically, as you look back, has been those dreamers, those doers, those entrepreneurs. And, and like thankfully, like the principle of like, like Deseret itself, we as a community have helped support a lot of those people. And we've created this, this community that, that does invite us to thrive and prosper and help one another when we're doing everything right. And, and I think that that's a great experience for you to have to understand how, how hard it is for those people. Cause like, like you said, that Sydney said to you, worst case scenario, you understand people better. You can empathize more. You understand how hard it is to grow a business, be in this, like the boardroom with all of these CEOs and get an increased perspective, which only helps you then, but even more so helps, helps you now. Because we, you know, how much of our, um, economy relies on, I mean, tech and tech growth and how much, I mean, jobs that they give us. And unfortunately we've seen this bad correlation of lack of job growth in, in Salt Lake. And I, I think that there's definitely a path forward because I mean, you have a 61 million reasons why people believe in our, I mean, tech community, tech environment, and, and I mean Silicon slopes, quote unquote. But we just have to be able to make it as easy, well, not as easy as possible, but we need to be able to help people where we can make the most impact and help, I mean, our citizens as well to be in a place where we can take those risks. Because that's what's going to, in the end of everything, help us all have Salt Lake be the place that we want it to be.
Well, I truly believe that Salt Lake County can be the best metropolitan area in the Western United States 10 years from now. That's exactly why I'm running for office. That's exactly why I co-founded and, and am building Rev Road Capital. There, you know, two different hats that I get to wear in our local community. But I just see so much opportunity for excellence in Salt Lake County and along the entire Wasatch front and the state of Utah more broadly. But that's what just energizes me is, and as I've been spending time around the entire county, you know, I, I like to say, you know, no candidate in this race is going to outwork me, out-fundraise me, or know the six districts of Salt Lake County better than I do. And that's my commitment. Um, and, and there's little subcultures all around Salt Lake County. Oh my gosh. Like being in Conwood Heights at that town hall last Thursday night was totally different than being at the community event in West Valley City the next night, Friday night. Totally different vibe. And being in Magna, Magna has its own vibe. Being in Harriman, Riverton, Bluffdale, you know, they kind of have their, their own, uh, subculture. Daybreak, you know, I, I love what Mayor Don Ramsey and the South Jordan City Council are doing in, in, in South Jordan and Daybreak and the development there. And then of course, Salt Lake City is Salt Lake City and just, uh, you know, I live right by the whale and ninth and ninth. And it's so fun to be able to just walk over and get dinner.
Yeah. There's so many great, like, and the more that we can have of that, and I mean, bring people to this great place. Cause I'm with you. Like when I, I've seen so much of this country and seen so much of the people and kind of what has dictated a lot of that success and like what people want to live around. And I mean, Salt Lake checks so many of the boxes for what people are looking for. And like also just, I mean, general trends. I mean, people want to live where they want to recreate. People live here where they can have a quality of life where they can be accessible, not just to the rest of the country easily, but the rest of the world easily. And be able to have this, I mean, multicultural melting pot that supports everything. But we also have the economy that can keep, keep bringing people here and keep giving them jobs and can keep funding that growth. And.
Yeah. I see it as a nice blend between like major cities in Texas where I've lived, Houston and Dallas, and the mountains and kind of Western vibes of, of Denver, right? And I don't want Salt Lake County to be like Denver is today 10 years from now. I want Salt Lake County to be distinguished, distinguished, different, differentiated. Where when people still fly in here from the East Coast or the West Coast, you know, or anywhere around the world into Salt Lake for the first time, the Olympics being a great example of this, where they go, oh, this is Utah.
Yeah.
And I think it's a great melting pot of startups and, uh, and youthfulness. And also the mountains and the recreational opportunities that we have.
Definitely. Um, so I want to hear about that conversation you had when you told, I mean, the rest of your partners that you have this idea about running for county council. I bet that was a, a, a fun one to say the least. But it's also, you're not leaving them for, because it's a part-time position. So you don't have to say goodbye completely.
No, yeah, it's, it's really, it's a six-year term. And of course, cause I'm a nerd and come from the private sector, I wanted to understand kind of what's the job description of a county council member and particularly an at-large county council member. And then how does this job description and responsibilities potentially weave into the other things that I do in life or conflict? And sometimes a little bit of both, right? And, uh, and so, yeah. Um, I've been, you know, leaning into the community more and more since launching Rev Road Capital and having been an executive at JP Morgan Prior, you know, and building a business and building an office here. I did get involved in the community in the Salt Lake and, and Lehigh and Silicon slopes and Park City communities. But then with raising Rev Road Capital Fund One and, and finishing that raise, I really felt like I could spend more time and energy in the community. Because here's the dirty little secret that my fellow VCs don't always want the world to know is I don't have to be anywhere at 8:00 AM every single day of my life, which I used to for 16 years of my life. Like, okay, when is the market open? You better be there before market opens. The, you know, the stock market opens every day and work from the office and all the things. And so I had additional capacity to do community building things. And so I've served on some nonprofit boards in the community. And in November, I, uh, got, I got a phone call from, uh, a senior Republican woman in elected office in the state of Utah. And, and she said, Rochelle, I really think you should run for office. And, and I said, well, I mean, yeah, maybe 10 years from now. And she goes, no, 10 weeks from now. We need you running for office.
Let's shorten that ad a little bit.
Why wait 10 years? You're awesome.
Yeah.
You know, the state needs you, the county needs you, our party needs you. And, and, uh, and I, and I looked at the seat and I, I looked at the race dynamics and, and I thought, and I just, there was, it was over Thanksgiving week and I was with all my siblings and all my nieces and nephews. And I just, I couldn't shake it. And I kind of kept it to myself. I mean, I called some key mentors immediately after she called me to, I was hope, uh, you know, I was hoping, you know, for five seconds that they would say, no, 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 no. But also would get that little, you know, thrill of exhilaration of like, oh, this person believes that I would be good at this and that I could win this race. So, and with each phone call, it wasn't a wet blanket. It was, yeah, I actually think she's right. Like I think that's a good idea and I think you'd be great at it. And, and so over Thanksgiving, just did a little bit of soul searching while I had some time off from work. And it was just this inner feeling of Rochelle, like you have the capacity, you have the skills, you have the energy, uh, to serve. And, uh, do you have the guts to do it? And it was just one of those moments of like, I'm the big sister in my family. I'm always the person who's hyping up my siblings or my nieces and nephews when, you know, they, they need a little extra ounce of courage. And I just thought to myself, Rochelle, if you don't throw your hat in the ring and try to serve your community in this way, you will always look back wondering, what if? And, and it just sort of felt like right place, right time, right race, right moment, um, right opportunity to serve. A lot of people have asked, why aren't you running for Congress or, you know, something else? And I'm like, well, I actually love Rev Road Capital. I love what I get to do, uh, in my private sector role. So first of all, it would have to be a part-time thing. And secondly, you know, for how like, kind of unattractive the county council often sounds to people. They're like, they're like, you're running for office. County council.
Is the office.
Okay. You know, there's, I, I've seen that facial expression on lots of people in my network. And I, and, and the people who know what the county does though, they go, oh, the county needs you. Because it's, it's a $2 billion annual budget. The county has massive amounts of real estate.
Shade. It's like, raise your hand if you've managed anything above seven, no, no, yes, no, that's what I thought. Okay.
Yeah. Well, and even, you know, with my fund, like we're managing a $61 million fund. And this is, you know, a $2 billion annual budget. And, um, I've gotten to know most of the council, all of the Republicans. And I've met, um, most of the Democrats on the council as well at this point. And, uh, very talented, smart people, you know, I think that's the value of what a council form of government brings is lots of different perspectives to a group. And you've got to get a majority, you know? So you have to convince four other people to vote alongside you if you want to bring a, a new idea or initiative to the table. And, uh, and, but when you look at the resumes, there's no one who spent, you know, 18 years being a professional investor. And so I just, I know I'll add value on day one. And, and so I didn't really answer your question, but yeah, when I, when I went to my partners. So, you know, all of my partners serve in major ecclesiastical ways in the community. And, and I kind of made the argument of, you know, I'm a practicing Latter Day Saint woman, but the LDS church is never going to ask me to serve the community in a way in which the church is just calling you to serve. And so this is a little bit of a crazy frenetic way to serve the community by running for office. But I really, I, I need to take these decades of experience of managing and working with some of the, you know, wealthiest families in America and wealthiest families in our state. And, um, and take that experience of knowing how to track money, understanding financial statements, understanding how to create structure around investment decisions. And, and put that to work for the 1.2 million people in our county where so many people remind me of my parents and the family and home that I grew up in. And they just want Salt Lake County to work. That's it. They just want it to work. They don't want to think about Salt Lake County, the entity.
No.
You know, it's kind, they just want to go to the rec center and the rec center is well-maintained in their community and it's affordable. And, uh, and there's fun things to do and the basketballs are inflated. You know, like I, I kind of feel like it's, uh, the county should be kind of the background work in the lives of our community where people don't even realize that we're doing really good work.
Yeah. If you're doing the best job, no one knows you're doing your job, which is the, the hardest, like, um, inverse relationship to deal with. But at the same time, like, it's kind of how it works. And so I kind of want to go back to that point about, you were talking about, like, people don't know what is all in this like $2 billion budget. But outside of, I mean, things we talked about, like the golf courses and the rec centers. I mean, what else is on, on this budget that you're, you're being managing?
Yeah. Well, I mean, the health department, county health department, health and human services. So, uh, if any restaurant you walk inside of in Salt Lake County, you'll see a certificate up on the wall. That's the health department. I think that makes sense. That, that we have a health department at the county level versus the city or municipal level. I mean, could you imagine like Sandy has its own health department, Conwood Heights, Salt Lake City, you know, Draper, Mill Creek. No, like it makes sense that that's at the county level, uh, for efficiency. Uh, we have a county jail. So, you know, it's, it's not city jails all over the county. We have a county jail. I think it makes sense that it's, uh, centralized at the county level. Cause the lowest level of government, city, then county, then state, then federal. And I think it's important for people to kind of think through, you know, I'm a proponent of local is often best. And, uh, and so most of the roads that you drive on are, are city roads, um, that are, that are local streets, you know, in your neighborhood, right? There are some county roads and unincorporated territory. Now I'm kind of nerding out, but, um, so we maintain those roads. And then there's a unified police department. So, um, communities like Kearns, Magna, Holiday, Mill Creek are all serviced by the unified police department. Yeah. And that's at the county level. They report into the county sheriff. We have county, we have elections. So the county clerk.
Yes.
Yes. County clerk, you know, and it's like, oh yeah, that makes sense. Property values, that's done at the county level.
Interesting. Huh.
Right? So, so you're assessor and then you pay property taxes up to the county level. When you look at your property tax bill every year, if you really actually look at it, you'll see like, I'm a Salt Lake City resident. So, uh, I have a Salt Lake City library fee on it because I pay Salt Lake City library fees instead of Salt Lake County library fees. But if I lived in South Jordan, it would be a Salt Lake County library fee. So, I mean, yeah, it's, it gets complicated quickly, which is why people are like, oh, but county rec centers, county parks and trails, the health department, uh, our jail, the unified police department, um, libraries, if I didn't say that.
So the things that we want to be working well without having to worry if they're working well.
Yes.
And I mean, yeah, cause like if we don't manage things appropriately or have that, like you, I mean, the word that you've come back to a couple of times is stewardship. If we don't, aren't stewards of it, then all of those things don't work anymore. And we're getting sick. We don't have trails to enjoy. Our jails aren't, can't hold enough people, like there's.
No, our county jail hasn't been invested in over the last several years. And, and so it is overrun and over, and understaffed. And as the county grows and population, you kind of, you gotta invest in the thing that no one wants to invest in, which is the jail, uh, or otherwise you run into other public safety issues.
Exactly.
So, but that's the thing that no one really wants to talk about. Everyone wants to talk about fixing homelessness. And then it's like, okay, but now I got to get into the mess of what are all the different factors that play into that? And then how do you enforce the laws that are on the books? And how do you, yeah. And then what are the specific laws and rules and, you know? But there's a lot of good people in the county and at the state level, and even at the city level, uh, Salt Lake City, who have, have really over the last year, started to put a lot of muscle into understanding homelessness, fentanyl, mental health and how they kind of all weave together.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. And it's messy. It's, it's not, there's not a one-size-fits-all solution there.
Yeah. And it's, uh, it's always an interesting topic. Cause like, I mean, it came up when I was talking to, um, Councilwoman Eva Lopez Chavez. And she was talking about how like, we have a budget, like we, we control where we spend money. We just need people with opinions to come like, bring them up. Cause sometimes we don't know unless people tell us. And so in the same way, like, we do have a lot of these problems that are, I mean, incredibly complicated and could never be on one person's shoulder to, to solve alone. But at the same time, we have the resources in order to put it in the right place. We just have to have the right people in the right room, which is why we need these people with the perspectives that they have and seeing what the future is, the future that we want, instead of just kind of, I mean, this curmudgeon attitude of like, well, gravel, gravel, gravel. Like can't do anything about it. We're not going to do anything. We're going to sit on our hands. It's the way we've done it forever. Kind of like that, that old mentality. And I, and I think it's, it's nice to have fresh faces fighting for that and willing to, I mean, work, I mean, to be that role, not only just do it, but then having to go. work, I mean, to be that role, not only just do it, but then having to go through the campaign process, which is incredibly exhausting and I mean, soul sucking. But at the same time, it's also what motivates you because you get to see all of these amazing people, see all of these nuances and not, and understand it's not just like this county. It's like, oh, well, there's so many pieces of it. And it's this collective tribe together that, that we all want to have in harmony and take care of.
Yeah. Well, uh, I've been pleasantly surprised. 90% of the time I'm really enjoying campaigning.
That's awesome.
And, you know, with it comes, I, I've, I've been doing well in all of the categories that matter of, of running a campaign, fundraising, getting in front of, you know, key elected officials and decision makers in the community, winning over the delegates, right? And so of course with that momentum then comes attacks, right? And that is the crazy thing with running for office is the stories that folks can, can, can come up with about you without talking to you. It's like, I'd be happy to have a five minute conversation with you to explain how I happen to have a personal relationship with this human being or that human being. But no, it does not mean that there's, you know, this well thought out, well orchestrated master plan of getting specific people in specific elected seats to then run the county or run the state in a very specific way over the next 10 years. It's like, no, y'all, like, that is like straight up not happening. I promise you.
I always love when there's these, these vast plans that require like Mission Impossible-esque coordination and concoction and deviousness. And if anyone's ever.
And no paper trails.
And no paper trails. And then it's like, anybody who's worked at like, large organization, you know, that is not the case.
And anyone inside of a family knows you can't manage a family like that.
Exactly. It's so funny to see these like, let's call them conspiracies. Let's call them like, not very thought out hypotheses, whatever. But at the same time, like they can still bring it to like, you'd be like, oh, let's talk about this. And like, maybe, maybe you aren't being targeted by the CIA. Have, have you thought about this? Or, I mean, to whatever extent it is, but at the same time, it's nice to have someone who's, again, like willing to sit down for five minutes and say, tell me about what you're, what's going on. You have very strong opinions of me. I would like to have an opinion of you. And now it kind of all makes sense. And, I mean, whether that's the, I mean, crazy guy down on the street, or if it's just someone wondering how, that if they're still going to have their after school program for their kid next year, because they don't know if it's going to be something that's going to be prioritized. And so whether it's, I mean, valid to you, valid to whoever, it's still an issue whoever has it. And, and I think that there's, there's definitely listening power for all of us to learn from them, even if it's just to empathize and understand who Bob is on the corner. I think that's always something that I think, going back to your point of like, why doing this? It's, it's, we need someone who cares. We need someone who, who does want to have that stewardship and, and take that, take that accountability on top of it, but.
Well, and I am hoping that most voters will ultimately say, I just want someone who's competent and collaborative and making that judgment call on their vote for that. I mean, there'll be over 500,000 people who vote in this race in November.
It's a lot of people.
Yes. For a part-time role, you know, representing the county. And so it's an expensive race, you know, but, but again, the county should kind of exist in the background of our lives, but they, but the county does impact our lives probably more than a US Senator or a US Congressperson representative impacts our daily lives, right?
People forget is the importance of like, the more boring and local politics are, the more impactful it is to you. And so I think it's, it's one of those things where, yeah, I mean, if people actually paid attention, be like, oh, this is something that gets provided me by this, or this is how I interact with my community. It starts to put things together a lot more. Because yeah, it's easy to kind of like turn your nose like, oh, it's just that seat. Or oh, it's just this, like, no, 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 these are the ones that often are going to impact your life more than whoever's sitting in DC.
Yeah. And, and so I, I take that seriously. And that's how I try to present myself. So even when the Tik Tok and YouTube and videos get made about me and the Facebook posts, you know, the temptation always is to punch back. Right? Or to jump into that rabbit hole to clarify and debate. And when the attacks are personal, for the most part, there's just no point in giving it oxygen. Because most people will never hear that personal attack. So they'll have no idea that someone even thinks that, you know, you're a part of this master plan to, I don't know, anyways, to do something crazy and highly disruptive to, to our lives. Like, okay, so that's not rooted in reality. And also over 500,000 people will be voting in this election. And most likely, you know, only 500 people will hear about that thing. So just staying focused on, um, on the project and task at hand, which is getting into the community every day, experiencing the community, understanding the needs and, and issues that are top of mind for most voters. And in Salt Lake County these days, it's, it's cost of living and, and housing and homelessness and public safety. Like those are the things that keep getting brought up over and over again. And so just staying focused on like, yeah, I should really understand those issues to the best of my capabilities and understand that this issue may look different for someone who lives in West Jordan than it does for someone who lives in Holiday.
And so I'm curious, I mean, it's so nice to, because again, like, when I talked about like, going back to Ava, like people don't vote, people vote for you to be a representative of the people that you are serving. They don't vote for you because popularity contests, like whatever.
There's a little bit of that.
There is always the popularity contest. And, but at the same time, like, I think it's so important to A, understand what, who the people are, what they want. And, but I guess from like a more, I mean, perspective to voters. I mean, how do you, how do you see yourself playing a role in solving a lot of these issues? Or, or being this voice that people can get behind for these matters that matter most?
Yeah. When I look at the at-large seat, I will have the same constituents that the county mayor has. Right? The county mayor is the executive branch, right? Kind of the CEO of the county. And I view the county council kind of as like the investment committee slash board of directors, the legislative branch of the county. And so, but being in the at-large seat, I have the same exact constituents as the county mayor does. And, and so from my perspective, but I'm wearing a different hat. I'm wearing the legislative hat of being county council member. So I view my role sitting at the county level. So in between, uh, most of my voters and constituents and their city government, and then the state government, and then leaping up above to the federal government. It's my responsibility to be a competent and collaborative advocate for all 1.2 million people in the county. And so that means I better have, pick up the phone and be able to have phone calls with city leaders all over the county to understand what are the biggest issues happening in their local municipality. But then also pick up the phone and have a phone call conversation with state leaders. And then also with our federal delegation. I should be well connected with every single layer of government that represents my constituents, which is anyone who lives in Salt Lake County. And I need to be a vocal advocate for the county. Because a city mayor is going, or a city council member is going to care about their local municipality. The state level, depending on, you know, if it's the legislature, they have their specific districts all over the state that they're primarily representing, whether in the House or Senate. And the governor, you know, and the lieutenant governor, they're looking over the entire state. So who is an advocate for Salt Lake County? Well, I sure hope that the county mayor is a proactive advocate for the county throughout the year with all of these different levels of government. But we are the juggernaut county in the state. We have over one third of the state population, over half of the state's GDP happens in our valley. And yet when you look at our state leadership, governor, not from Salt Lake County, lieutenant governor, not from Salt Lake County. I mean, you know, the governor now lives in the mansion down the street from the Capitol. But, uh, you know, he's from Sampead and Deidre, she lives in Utah County. And then you have our senate president, not Salt Lake County. Speaker of the House, not Salt Lake County.
Interesting.
House Majority Leader, not Salt Lake County. House Majority Whip, not Salt Lake County. You know, Senate Majority Leader, not Salt Lake County. So, so I think, um, anyways, the, but, but that's why it's really important that Salt Lake County leadership is proactive, proactively advocating and building relationships and being competent and collaborative with state leaders. Because it's not like any state leader wakes up and says, what's the best thing for Salt Lake County today?
Yeah.
No, because they represent other parts of the state, right? And, and so I really do view the at-large role as being kind of an effective advocate for our county, working alongside the county mayor's office. And sometimes maybe, you know, being a check on the county mayor's office to, to get things done at the state level. But I hope it's, it's usually in a very collaborative way. And, and as you know, with, with any sort of negotiations and trying to get, you know, big deals done and big projects done, uh, sometimes I'm the right person to go to that meeting. Sometimes it might be the county mayor. Sometimes it might be a, a district council member is ultimately the best person. But let's actually think about like Salt Lake County first, making sure Salt Lake County always has a seat at the table so that then we're not surprised by infrastructure projects going to other parts of the state and not Salt Lake County. Cause the state leaders are the ones who make those decisions. And then if a constituent ends up with a need that requires support from our federal delegation, passport or, you know, I mean, things come up, right? Well, I have relationships with many of our federal delegation, right? And so if they're struggling with getting a response for some reason, because, you know, the federal office has gotten, you know, that congressman's office has gotten several constituent requests in the last 24 hours. Like, well, maybe I can be the squeaky, squeaky wheel that can help if it's truly an urgent thing. And that's, that's what I want to be.
No, I mean, and it's so funny because it's such a simple like concept, but at the same time, it's the one that usually gets the most outcomes is being like, yeah, hey, I'm the person who's going to be at your office every morning saying, hey, I need this thing done. So I'm here again at your office saying, can we get this thing done? Or even if it's, I mean, having the right rapport with the right people. So if you need someone to pull, like, I mean, do a favor, you need the county mayor to do something. Or you, I mean, realize you're not the right person, but you can get it. You know, all the different situations that you can walk into. But being able to know these people personally and being able to have those connections is what's going to get the most things done. Because again, you can be as theoretical and hypothetical and, and smart as you want to. But if you're not getting things done, it doesn't matter.
Yeah. Well, and you have to show up to the meetings. I mean, the, we're, we looked at two stadium deals that happened in the legislature this year. And my understanding is that, you know, we didn't necessarily always have county representative at the table. And so then these projects kind of get announced and Salt Lake County is getting surprised.
We're getting a stadium.
Being reactive to it rather than being proactive to it. And, and, and I'm not here to point fingers at anyone. There's, Salt Lake County is a massive county with so many things going on. You know, I just want to bring my skills to the table and, and say, hey, I'm, I'm young enough. I'm still in my thirties, a six-year term. Like I can go up to the Capitol regularly for these meetings if no one else can. And I, I can show up and, and start building those types of relationships with billionaire, you know, franchise owners who want to figure out some sort of, of, of a deal and, and, you know, make sure that these things stay in Salt Lake County, that we don't lose them to other counties.
There has been. It's funny.
People in Utah County are listening to this and like, hey.
They can talk to their county council or their county commissioners.
They've got county commissioners, yes.
I see. I was paying attention. No, I think it's, I think it's a good reminder for a lot of people that like, again, I mean, the local, the things that we think don't matter really do matter the most. And especially as we have so many things coming up for our state that we, that we do. Like to your point, we do want to make it one of the best city in the West in the next 10 years. So then I almost like have it be this like, um, Indiana Jones, like sleight of hand where instead of the Olympics in 2034 being like, oh, it's in Salt Lake. Like that'll be fun, I guess. Instead of being like, well, how convenient that like, it's in this great place that everybody loves already, you know? And so I'm, I'm excited for all of that.
With snow, we don't even have to make snow for this Olympics.
I know. I'm sorry, China. But no, I'm totally with you. We just got to make sure we can keep, keep the Great Salt Lake so we can have some lake effect and, and have that snow there else it'll be a pretty boring, um, Winter Olympics. But also, I mean, safety, homelessness, cost of living. I mean, these are the things that I hear from people day in, day out that, that people are scared of. And I, I mean, they think there's enough examples that we can look around, I mean, the world and the country to say like, yeah, like this could happen. And, but if we don't have like, I mean, using an example of mine, like, I mean, in Seattle, like cost of living was so high, they had so, like every day I would check the news. Well, I wouldn't check the newspaper, but I'd see the news and it'd be like.
I pulled out the newspaper at my breakfast table. Yes.
Exactly. As I have my, yeah. I wish I was, could be that person, but I could never be that person.
I don't think anyone in our generation can really be that person. I think that, yeah.
And, but like, it would be like, oh, this, the, it was like, the mayor just got caught in this scam. So he just stepped down and then the police deployed. It's like, there was just these people, like, we just need competent, to your point. The, the thing we need most is competent people who can get things done. And if that happens, then a lot of good things will happen. But if it doesn't, then we're not going to see the same results that we want to. So I think Rochelle, I'm excited to see how the campaign goes. I'm excited to, to, to be one of those 500,000 voters in, in this race and all of these important races coming up. Before we go, want to talk, um, sorry.
Well, well, and I want folks from other cities around the Western United States to be hearing about what's happening in Salt Lake County and Salt Lake City over the next several years and go, hey, we need to go visit and see what's going on there. Because it seems like whatever they're doing, it's working. You know, that, and, and this is something that comes up a lot is, is people want to feel like their parks are safe, that they can take their families to the park and, 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 you know, and then, but also our chronically homeless neighbors are, we have stewardship responsibilities at the county level to take care of our, our friends who are often dealing with mental health crises, some sort of, of a break psychologically and, and who often have issues with, with drugs. And, and so what do we do to make sure that we treat everyone in our county with dignity? But also enforce the rules and laws that are on our books so that then families want to raise their children in our county over the next decade? Like it is so vital that this is a place where people want to raise children. Or otherwise, Salt Lake won't be the best metropolitan, you know, area in the, in the Western United States when the Olympics come.
Yeah.
I mean, I think we'll still be an okay place, right? But I want this to be a place where families thrive and where, you know, maybe you don't live in the biggest house, maybe you could have, maybe you could live in a bigger home in another county, but you've got, you know, the library is a couple of miles away. You've got a park and trail system that's fun, that's accessible, that's clean, that's safe. And then you have these major league sports franchises in our county. And not large, not long commutes. Doesn't that sound great?
I am, that is part of all of the reasons why I love living in Salt Lake. And like, I mean, I was similar when I, before I bought my house, I was like, okay, we could go north, we could go south. But like, I will openly and honestly say like, I am, I'm not a Utah, I'm a Salt Lake citizen. And so I was like, I will take that smaller place because I do like everything that it has to offer. I do love all the excitement that's happening here and I'm excited for the future. And it's so fun. And in talking to people, I love, like, that's one of my favorite conversations to have with people is like friends who have friends visit. And like, I always see people at, I mean, Edison House that I'll see friends there and they'll have guests. And they'll be like, I didn't know this place was like so cool. I didn't know they're like, all the outdoors was so closed and like Park City is right there and skiing is right here and the airport's right here. And there's Moab in St. George. And like, I'm like, yeah, yep, yeah.
And then when they find the Uintas in July, whoa, game over.
Oh, I mean, that's what I was talking to, um, Kendall Rodriguez about. Cause she, I mean, it's the director of operations for the women's basketball team at the U. And she's like, it was so hard to get these girls to come and just do a visit. Because like, oh, you have like Stanford and UCLA and USC and you, like, and all these other schools. It was like, oh, you want to come to our like major metropolitan city that we don't really have to sell. But then they'd come here and she's like, as, as long as we could get them on a tour, they would get it. And we would all of a sudden have a ton of momentum in, in their decision of where they wanted to go. And so I think it's, I mean, extremely great. And so I think it's, I mean, extremely great point that we need to get this recognition, get people out here, get stigmas out of people's heads. And the only way we do it is if we, we take care of like the little things. It's like a good basketball team. Good basketball team always goes down to the fundamentals. And so even as we think about, oh, these grandiose ideas of NHL, MLB, well, like whatever the next idea that we could have, we still have to take care of these fundamentals and make sure that our entire infrastructure and the way that we're planning for it holds it as well.
Yeah, that we actually get the water tanks out to West Jordan that are needed so that then they can build the neighborhoods that they have planned out. But like, you've got to get that money earmarked from the state to get the water tanks built so that then you can actually build neighborhoods and build more, more houses and yeah.
The whole
And that's where it comes back to like the boring work. But the, but the boring work is what is, excites me.
Yeah. I'm with you. Like, I love the idea of being like, oh, again, people are like, oh, our cost of living is like, okay, then we probably need more houses. We can put houses over here, but they're going to need sewage, they're going to need to get zoned, they're going to need to get value. They're get like, there's just this laundry list that people, I mean, don't know because they don't have to go through it. But somebody has to do this. Somebody has to make sure this is all happening. Somebody has to pay attention to how much this is all costing. And, and I, I think, yeah, I think you're a great candidate for the job and I'm excited for, for this race coming up.
Well, thank you. Yes. Well, and, and look, getting elected to the seat, I recognize a six-year term. And I've been telling folk, that folks this on the campaign trail, that structure to me informs human behavior inside of the structure. So how companies are organized, you know, and reporting lines and, and, and things like that. And a six-year term, so the county mayor's race is also going on this year. So everyone is going to vote for, you know, the, the incumbent is, is Jenny Wilson and the Republican challenger is Erin Ryder. Both are really sharp, competent women. And I've, I've gotten to know Erin well over the last few months. And that is going to be an interesting race to watch. But the county mayor is a four-year term and I'm a six-year term and the district seats are four-year terms. So to me, this informs me that should I get elected, I should be taking the most risks as a county council member in the first two years of service, because I have the longest tail to getting reelected. So I should be leading out and saying, well, could we do something different? You know, are we willing to try something different? And it's my name that's on it instead of someone who only has a four-year term trying to lead out on it. And by the time it gets done, it's really two years from reelection. And if it turns out that it's not going well in those first 18 months, they could lose their job.
Yeah.
Right? Whereas for me, I come boldly out of the gate and say, hey, like, I think maybe we should restructure some things over here between the mayor's and office and, and the council's office and just see what that does in organizationally for the county. And, and if it works, great. Oh my gosh. Well, great. Then, then I have, you know, a couple more years of, of, of implementing tweaks around this major, you know, innovation, as I like to call it, to, to, to some of the ideas that I have. And if it's not working, I have time personally to try to pivot and come up with a new way before my term is up. And, and so, so, so anyways, I, and just, you know, anyone who's listening to this podcast and leading teams or departments inside of any company, inside of any organization, you know, really think through how reporting lines are structured, how teams are organized, how big the teams are, how big committees and councils are. And, and because structure so often informs human behavior.
Oh, totally. And yeah, it's like, and it's those things a lot of people don't think about, but they're drastically important. And being set up in a way right now that are going to impact us for so much longer.
Just thank you so much for having me on tonight.
Thank you. No, I'm excited. It's been fun to see Chase here because I'll see him a lot now that he's a member and, and he's, and I love Chase. He's such a good guy.
Chase is a great guy. And Edison House is awesome and so cool.
It's been a fun spot.
And I, you know, it's, I feel like so much has happened even since I launched my campaign a few months ago. And if people want to find me, I'm just under 500 followers on Instagram.
Let's get it up to 500.
Yes. So RochelleMorris UT is my Instagram handle. I'm on Twitter, Rochelle underscore Morris. And then my website is voterochellmorris.com. So there, check the box team Rochelle. I did what I was supposed to do and plug my contact information for the campaign. And look, I, if anyone wants to get involved with the campaign, obviously we would welcome that. You can DM me on any of those channels and we'd be happy to get you involved. And one of my favorite things on the campaign that I've been doing is trying restaurants all over the county.
I have been taking notes because if I ever find myself in all of these places, I'm like, all right, I got a spot if in case I need to go here. Here's this great taco truck that Rochelle talked about. Here's this, yeah. I've, I've been paying note to those more than anything.
Oh yeah. No, there are great tacos in West Jordan and West Valley City. And there's a really like lovely bakery on the main street of Magna called Beard Halls. And, and then Sandy, there's a spot, I can't think of its name right now, that was just so delicious and like clearly a neighborhood spot. I have a highlight on my Instagram page. So the, the food content is stored and saved. I, I, you know, we mostly talked county issues tonight, but I know most people following my Instagram account are not necessarily interested in me taking a picture in front of every single county library every day, but food?
Food? Yeah, we can all get behind that.
We could talk about food around the county all day, every day.
That's, that's a conversation I can always have. And then last question I have for Rochelle is if you could have someone on the Small Lake City Podcast and hear their story, who would you want to hear from?
Ooh, that is a really good question. Okay. Anyone, have you had Victoria Petro on yet?
No.
Oh, well, Victoria is on the Salt Lake City Council. She represents Westside of Salt Lake.
Cool.
And she is someone who I feel like, you know, she has a different political and policy perspective often than I do. But is very competent and collaborative and was very involved with the NHL deal. And anyways, I think she could give some like really great insights into the part of Salt Lake City that she represents and what it's like being on the council. So.
Yeah. I mean, that's honestly, I need to, because I mean, so much of like me and my life is like not necessarily in West Valley. And so like, I've always
Well, she's Salt Lake City.
Okay. Sorry. Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yeah. Well, I mean, if you're willing to branch out into the county, then we can talk about
Oh, I'm sure you have
Republicans as well. I mean, so Matt Holton, I think would be a very interesting interview as well. He lives in Conwood Heights. He serves on Conwood City Council. He worked for Senator Mike Lee for many years and now is a political consultant, uh, running Representative Celeste Malloy's campaign. So that was quite interesting because Mike Lee endorsed her opponent.
Interesting.
Going into convention.
House divided.
Yes. And Matt serves at local government. Conwood Heights is, you know, a cool part of the county. I mean, you walk into that city town hall and it felt like you walked into a Patagonia plus Kodapaxi, like catalog, you know? And
Makes sense.
Anyways, I think Matt would have really great stories to tell and so would Victoria. So there you go. I gave you a Republican and I gave you a Democrat.
There we go.
Yes.
No, that, that sounds like a great idea. Well, thank you so much Rochelle. So great to sit down with you and hear more about what's going on. And I'm excited to follow this race and hopefully see you at the finish line.
All right. Thanks. Appreciate it.
Of course. Thank you so much for listening to this week's episode of Small Lake City Podcast. Don't forget to like, follow, review, subscribe and share this episode with your friends and we'll catch you next week. We'll see you there.